Whatever your TV.
I think it died.
Fried.
There he is.
On the, there you go. Welcome everyone to the Town of Wells planning board meeting. For Monday, August fourth, the first item will be to review the minutes of July twenty first. Did anyone have any questions, additions, or deletions? Page one. Two. Three. Four. Five. Hearing none? Entertain a motion to accept the minutes as written?
So move.
Is there a second? All those in favor? That is unanimous. The next item this evening will be public hearings. How we conduct our public hearings is we allow the applicant to come forward. Tell us, the people at home, what they propose to do. Once they're done with their presentation, you have the opportunity to question the applicant through the board. Once the public hearing is closed, there are no further comments this evening. So the first public hearing will be Founders Park. And would you like to introduce yourselves, please?
Wyatt Page at Engineering.
Dave McKenzie representing Founders Park Community Center Committee.
Community Center.
Community Center.
Got it. Welcome. Would you like to tell everybody what you propose to do, please?
Yes, so we're proposing a twenty-four thousand square foot municipal facility that is a community building in every sense of the word. During the winter times, it would be an ice rink, could be used for various community activities and that sort of thing. It has small facilities being bathrooms and a utility area. And otherwise just stormwater to, and stormwater and various site improvements in order to treat all of the area that's being created. And it's intended to slot right in with the surrounding facilities, namely those of the town and those of the nearby school. It connects to the front right off of Sanford Road and to the back, there is a small connection to the parking lot. Of Wells, I believe it's the middle school, I can't.
Elementary.
Elementary school, thank you. Connects to Wells Elementary in the back. And we've also, and it's noted on the plans, we, for the most part, were able to preserve the character of the park. Only deserve disturbing a very small swath of the wellend.
Thank you. Any comments, Dave? Any questions, comments from any members of the public? Any questions or comments from any members of the board?
We've closed the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor? Public hearing is now closed. Being the next item on the agenda, this is an item to workshop. Mike, you have some comments for us on this?
Uh, yes, we have to point to the small screen because the big screen died earlier. It was working earlier today and now it's died, so we've worked on the small screen for the plans. We didn't have any comments from the public hearing. That was the first item on the agenda. The second item on the agenda was to review workshop items for compliance. Uh, we had several plan markups we provided to the applicant, so we're looking for some of those to be addressed still. Uh, we're looking at square footage on the second floor. If there was gonna be storage space or some use of the second floor. If there's not, we just wanna know that as well. Uh, we are looking for some additional lighting information. If there's gonna be any pole lights on the site. Or if there were gonna be any building mounted lighting that could affect anything. Uh, we had some comments on the stormwater management plan that are still pending. Um, also looking for written permission from the Wells Agunkwick combined school district. For this easement area needed right along this portion of the property line for the construction of a stormwater pond. Uh, we did receive letters from the sanitary district and the water district approving connections to the project. Uh, one item to discuss was the apron coming into the facility itself. Uh, the board had discussed maybe doing bollards in the past, but bollards would inhibit some of that emergency access. This is not an apron for any vehicle access at all. It's gonna be sort of a higher end peaver walkway coming in. As a, as an esplanade coming into the, the building itself. Um, so bollards would be difficult to put there, uh, but maybe some signage, the emergency vehicle use only. Or non-vehicle use posting there, didn't how the board would consider what type of restrictions. It could just be done potentially with like a steeper slope granite curbing right at the road and then it goes into pavers. So it doesn't have any type of obvious look as an entrance. Uh, but some signage might be good as well. Uh, but the board did discuss bollards before, so I wanted to get the board's input on that to get to the applicant.
I don't know, I think you need something there because it's just, it's so wide that it's gonna invite people to drive in. So, um, bollards was the, the easy one and maybe I'd suggest those ones that have the spring at the bottom that they flex. So that if, if emergency, you can drive over them.
I even think the stainless steel ones you can push down, hide underground.
Well, the problem with those is they don't work. That's what happened in Louisiana when they had that.
So, so what's gonna happen is the, the major use and the major EMS is gonna be probably in the wintertime if anything. So what happens when they freeze?
Well, the spring ones won't freeze. I, I, I don't wanna use the ones that go up and down because I think they will freeze. I agree with you there.
I, I think we gotta think about something other than bollards.
I, I think if you had those. Stanchions that are rubber flexible that you could drive right over them if you had to in an emergency.
Trashcans?
No, not trashcans.
But a bigger trashcan you can move.
Yep.
You can put a trashcan, that could be another option.
You know, something that you can just drive over. You don't want something solid because someone's gonna have to get out. You need to move it, something like that. But if you just have those crash ones, you can drive right through.
The, the other issue that I, that I have on that is that's gonna be in the middle of a paved walkway. And I'm worried about the water getting down into the pavers on whatever you put there. That will freeze.
Not the, not the ones with the rubber stanchions standing on top of the pavers.
Right.
You know, like the, the ones they put on like cones, you know, like cones in the street, but the tall ones.
Yep.
Like they put in the middle of the road last year, down around the beach and things.
Can we put those right out in the, in the town right away? Not in the pavers?
It's just a, so, so it's, I don't know if you've ever seen it. It's a, it's a rubber strip that sits on top.
Yeah.
And there's like four or five of these. They just, you just drive it over and they, and they bounce back up after the vehicle was over. They don't have to be secured in any way.
They will just stop people from driving in there randomly, which is what you wanna stop.
Yeah, we dealt with, we dealt with these in my time at the DOT. It's just a long weighted strip, doesn't do any damage to what's underneath there.
Right.
Um, pretty awkward to move as well. So, you know, it's not like it's gonna get stolen because it's not anchored to the pavers. So, yeah, I think we can do that.
Okay, that's fine.
Uh, I will have to track down some kind of detail on that, but that's, that's pretty easy, yeah.
And also, Mike, I noticed you didn't mention generators and things of that nature when you were going down your list.
That was one of the items, just to confirm, there's nothing proposed like a generator beyond the building footprint or anything that produces a lot of noise.
No, there's, there's no generator. The only thing that's proposed is just the air conditioning system and that'll be on the second floor deck. For the, uh, that's proposed.
So that was my, my, my question for you regarding second floor square footage. To my knowledge, it's just.
Just storage.
Utilities related and, and it's not easily accessible storage. You know, it's not like.
Yeah, you have, you have to go up the, the side stairs on the deck and that's gonna be fenced off.
Okay.
Is, is there gonna be, um, utilities would be good to know too, but if there's gonna be like a, a storage room for. Tables or chairs or things like that.
Yep.
We'd wanna know that too.
Okay, that's fine, just.
Yep.
So you, we mentioned before that you're doing rentals. You don't wanna see them by generator in case someone's renting it, okay?
And Dave, the, uh, the memo from James General about the parking.
Yep.
Just means that, that you're restriping the parking lot to comply with what he's got here.
Uh, yeah, that's all. And I had a quick question for Mike and the board regarding lighting. So it was my understanding discussing with Dave that we were gonna wait until building plans themselves were more finalized in order to address lighting. Um, are we looking for a photometric plan? Do we think for a fi- like for a final plan or?
For a final plan you will, but you don't need it now.
Okay.
We're only looking to light the inside of this. We're not looking to put any lights on the outside. This is gonna, this is gonna blend, no, this is gonna blend in, in so you don't see it. That's the whole idea.
Yeah, if there were, if there were exterior building mounted lights or any like even fancy lanterns to go, I'll play the brick apron.
Nope.
We would need to see those on the plan before we do.
No, everything's gonna be inside. So if there's gonna be, the, the, the downlights will be in the overhang so that it'll come down and it'll wash out. But we don't wanna be lighting the whole exterior of the facility.
But yeah, I think that the note you would put on the plan, I just deferred it to building permit period.
Yep.
And, and that would, you know, the interior lights, fine, but if there were exterior lights, that wouldn't be okay. We have more information on it.
Yeah.
Yep.
So if it's just the interior lights and yes is still a fine answer, do we still want a photometric plan with final if it's just gonna be the interior lights?
Not if it's just interior.
Okay.
So, but you would be, be required to have a light in the exterior for the equipment room? That's, that's, that's a code.
Oh, for the utility room that we were just talking about?
Yeah, you, you would be required, that would, that's a code issue.
Yeah.
It, it is just, I want people to know that it is an exterior light, you would have to have it, but it's not a pole mounted light.
Yeah, there'd be no pole mounted light. I mean, if anything, there'd be a couple, couple of house lights that'll go on the side of the building, that's all.
And that's what you, you'd have for that access port.
Right.
Okay, and so we'll figure out which, you know, I presume maybe it's just the one for the door, but we'll, we'll get that sorted out and we'll get you a photometrics plan. We, I have a guy who gets them turned around in a remarkably quick amount of time.
Uh, there were a couple of buffer determinations for the board to make. Um, along the front of the, the property, there's three proposed trees to be retained. Um, and that goes to our fifteen foot landscape buffer requirement along Inneytown Street. Uh, if you'd like to make a motion to accept that as an acceptable Sanford Road buffer.
So move, so if you.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
And we also do have, um, it's far away from the new construction, but we have an existing residential abutter. Like, you know, the whole site is surrounded by the school, which is not a residential use. Uh, we have one residential abutter all the way over here that abuts the property everything is on. Uh, no, like I said, no changes proposed in that area, uh, but the board typically makes its determination that the existing buffer is still satisfactory.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Um, we just had a couple of other minor plan changes to make with, uh, labeling the width of the right of way out at Sanford Road. Um, to actually name the easement, the easement for the drainage easement was crosshatched. Uh, well on the plan, but it didn't label what it, what it was for.
Damn, Wyatt just brought that easement language.
Yes, so, so, and I wanted to, so I have copies for the board if people want a physical copy today. Um, I did want to point out, and I talked this over with our head surveyor today as he was giving this to me. Um, the boundary that we took from the reference plan, which I believe was the, the town, the entire Town of Wells parcel plan. Um, used, I don't know, I can't remember the exact language. I'm not a professional surveyor. But one of them was on grid and the other was not. I believe our drawing was on grid and the reference wasn't. So, and we have this language here, which has bearings and distances that are based on grid north, but do not exactly align with what's on there. Um, I wanted to be upfront about that. It's still, it still describes the easement well enough. Um, we'll have updated bearings and distances on our existing conditions plan. Our surveyor will put whatever disclaimer is on there as well. But I wanted to, and thankfully right where we put it, they did actually find the corner monuments. But, um, if, and I'm happy to give this out and give some sort of an explanation further. But at the time, I just have the document describing the easement. Um, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't gonna be taken as like, you know, an actual boundary plan. Which we don't currently have at this time. And it was my understanding that we had the previous boundary as filling that need.
Yeah, that's pretty typical that, you know, with new surveys based on GPS, it's all on state line coordinate, which is great. And there's always a, you know, multiple degree difference between grid north and, and old magnetic. So that's understandable. We'd be looking for that actual, that's, it sounds like you have the meets and bounds description.
Yep.
But we're actually gonna be looking for the, the draft legal language.
You said you'd send that up to the town attorney.
Yes, I think the town attorney's gonna be.
He's gonna write that. So we have it now, so you could send it out and get it taken care of.
Right. We already talked about generator and noise and those items that are in the memo. Um, no other determinations to make, so it would be at the point where the planning board could vote to continue it for thirty days, sixty days. Whichever you desire. They can of course come back in two weeks, but.
So the elementary school plan has to be amended. Is that gonna come in at the same time?
Uh, that is, will be a condition. So we'll have to put a condition that, um, that has to be amended to show the easement and the stormwater pond on it.
Yeah, they're gonna bring it at the same time so we can approve them both at once.
I didn't plan to, which is gonna put a condition on this approval that they have to do it prior to occupancy or create a deadline, a dated dead deadline. But if that was just gonna be a condition of this approval, uh, we weren't seeking that for the school to submit right now.
So what, so what happens if the school balks afterwards?
Well, that's why it's important to get something in writing from the school that they're agreeable to it.
Yep.
We do need that. We need something in writing from the school that says.
Yep.
That they're in favor of the project and willing to grant the easement.
You should think you could bring the site plan amendment at that same time.
Be pretty, be a very, pretty simple and straightforward one.
So if we bring it in all at once, we just approve it and it's done.
We're, we're trying to get this approved though, so for fin- financing issues, so.
Okay. Move to, uh, consider the workshop for sixty days.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Do you have any more questions at all this evening? They're all set.
I've already got most of them settled. I had, I still need to have one of our, we need to double check the stormwater. Thank you all.
Welcome. The next item of discussion this evening is Fox Ness subdivision. Are they here?
No, they, they still haven't got the army core permit. They did make the other, any changes we recommended. But, uh, still haven't got the army core permit and that's under an existing extension until we get it. So nothing, nothing to do with that one. So we were really hopeful of getting a item A, but.
No need, we don't need a motion, Mike. Okay. So they're still under the tri- thing, so we'll go over that one. The next one will be Brookside subdivision. Are they here this evening? Thank you, Josh. Welcome.
Welcome.
And for the record, would you like to tell everybody who you are, please?
Just Levante Development?
Craig Burgess with Acorn Engineering.
Awesome. Again, Mike, you have comments for us?
Uh, yes, we just, uh, looked at this a couple of weeks ago at the last meeting. And, uh, the only item we were missing for the conditions of the plenary approval was the draft easement. Um, for the public access to the open space and that was provided. So all those conditions have been satisfied. Uh, item ten two on our memo was to review the final completeness, I guess. And, uh, they have provided project minutes. Uh, they did do some revisions to it at, at the board's comments from the last meeting. They also revised the capital and annual operating cost for the subdivision. Uh, stormwater management plan has been submitted in the past. I do a geo study submitted in the past. Um, the roadside sidewalk, the stormwater plans and labeled as, uh, these are most of them are separate ways that we've done. Uh, with the updated, uh, authority link. Uh, there was a update to the wetlands for renovation that had been added to the plans. We did receive the letter from the soil scientist giving the reasons why that needed to be updated. Uh, we also received the test pit logs associated with some new test pits. There were some septic system locations that had to be adjusted due to the wetlands. Uh, so that's been received. Um, they are providing a, a fire system on site for fire protection. We haven't got final written comment from the fire chief on that. But it's the exact system that, that the town accepted on, uh, the last subdivision we did for Chick's Crossing. Uh, we have looked at some of the HOA documents. Um, there's one document we're needed for the, uh, the fire system. So your typical easement you do to the town for access to the fire system, uh, we need that still. And, uh, we had some notes referring to no cutting of the buffers and signage. Um, and those have been, uh, placed on the plan as well. So we were recommending the planning board to find the application as complete and schedule the public hearing at the next meeting.
So, um, sorry. You say that septic system locations were revised due to wetland. You said, you, on here it says new test pit logs not yet provided. I thought you just, did you say the, uh?
Just got them today, yep.
If the board is interested, I did bring paper copies if.
No, I, I just wanted to make sure I heard them right, that's all.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So just, just looking over the, uh, the cost estimate. It, it, most everything looks, um, pretty good. I just, the only, the only question I had is on that curbing. Did you guys get a price from your slip form curb drag? Cause that, that's, uh, I mean, the last price I got last year was thirty-two bucks a foot and you guys are at like two and five.
I can, I can look into that more and, yeah.
Everything else looks like it's adjusted pretty close, so.
Yeah, usually the, uh, my excavators usually do it all as part of their pricing, so I don't know what the breakdown for that is. But we could adjust it if you want or whatever.
Thanks.
Landscape plan?
You said we're gonna submit that on the final.
We'll bring it next time.
But Craig said last time that we were gonna submit it on the final.
We can submit one final.
I just wanted, before you got to the final.
Yes.
I just wanted to look at it. I got five pages. I can't look at it.
And I think maybe it was discussed at the last meeting to do a full size copy of that or that?
It was gonna be a full set at eleven by seventeens.
Oh, eleven by seventeens, okay.
Yeah, I was gonna, we were gonna do the thirty-six by twenty fours. We're gonna do eleven by seventeen, so a full set.
Eleven by seventeens, yep, yep.
For when you guys were in next.
I, the last meeting, I, I heard they were gonna be on the, at the last meeting, it was gonna be submitted.
That was expecting them for this one, but not big deal.
Yeah, we can, we'll make sure we get them on the next one.
Sorry about that. For this meeting, my goal was to get the, that, that open space deed language. And then we tried to make any other revision that we could within that timeframe.
Yeah, I'm just trying to save you guys from multiple trips, that's all.
Yep, yep. No, I mean, the landscape plan, I don't think has changed at all since the last time we had talked about it and everybody was good with it, so. You should be on board with that.
Yeah, I think the only thing that was different on it was it still labeled the, the sidewalk as an apple.
Yep, yep, we just gotta change, yep, just change the paperwork.
But all the.
Yeah, exactly, yep.
Make a motion to find the application complete and to schedule the final public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second to that, all those in favor? That is unanimous.
One other thing I do wanna ask, um, can we get a note on the plan that says that, uh, about sixteen, seventeen. And twenty-five, uh, that you'll put in the deed that there's a no cut buffer in those deeds? That they spell it right out in the deed so that people can't say we didn't know that.
Yeah, we talked about that towards the beginning.
We did, yeah, I thought it was on all.
Yeah, I think.
It's on, it's already all, should already be in there.
I didn't see it, that's all.
We'll make sure.
Just wanna make sure there's a note on the plan that says that, that it's in there, we call it deed.
Supposed to be a no cut buffer on all of them, isn't it?
Anything that's in the no cut.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I just, the ones that concern me are the, are those main three coming down the end there. And it is, cause seventy feet back into their property, you never know.
Do you want, like, uh, like all the deeds to say, hey, to reflect any buffers on the plan? Um, you know, so.
Just, yeah, any of the, the deeds that have a buffer.
Or you think it's specifically just for those three lots?
I, I just wanna make sure that the people don't buy the lot, go in there, build on it and then decide to cut it and say it's my property.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have it on all, so they'll be subject to the plans.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, it's supposed to be on all the deeds.
But, but more than just a statement subject to the plan.
No, I wanted to say that there's a seventy foot setback.
Okay.
Specific language on, on those.
It's supposed to be on all of them so that there's a no cut buffer that they understand when they get their deed, they can't be cutting that.
Yeah, but normally they say that it's subject to the plans. I wanted to spell out what it is on the.
It's not just those three lots.
If we could put that on there.
Yep.
Yep. Just, just that way there because I, I can see the people going in there and, you know, saying, I got, this is my lot, seventy feet off the thing and they, they cut it and then say, oh, I didn't realize that. At closing, their, their attorney will tell them, you know, you have a seventy foot setback.
Yep.
Okay.
Put it on there.
We're all set. We've scheduled it for a public hearing.
Perfect.
Great, that's in two weeks?
Yep, two weeks.
Thank you very much.
Can you tell us, Mike?
Next, next week. Two weeks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
The next item this evening is Barak Kimball Estates subdivision amendment. I need someone to receive the minor subdivision amendment.
Make a motion to receive minor subdivision amendment for Barak Kimball Estates subdivision.
All those in favor? You've been received. Welcome. Please tell everybody who you are.
Uh, my name's Courtland Holloway. Um, and I would like to put a, uh, dwelling, uh, for my retired parents to live on our property, um, in the back. And, uh, we have, uh, the acreage. And, um, we filled out a minor subdivision amendment. Um, and you can kinda see the details there. We're hoping to just make sure we do it all the right way, do what you want us to do.
Take care of it.
Okay.
Well, the board's decision, do we need to make, have a site walk on this? I do believe we should.
Well, I think.
The, the lot's already there.
There were people that wanted to comment on it, I believe, weren't there? Did we have comments on this?
None of this one, none of it was done.
No, they were here earlier than they wanted to.
They were here earlier.
I think they were here for.
They wanted for Brookside. I think they wanted Brookside.
No.
No, it was this one here.
Wire road.
Wire road.
It was this one?
Yeah, it was this one here.
It was the wire road.
Yes.
So.
Yes. There were.
I mean, it, you're only, you're only allowing them to put another dwelling unit on there. The setbacks are already there.
Yeah.
I don't know why we'd need to go do a se- a site walk. I mean, as far as a public hearing, absolutely.
We could do a public hearing. Do a public hearing, sure.
Make a motion that a site walk is not required.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous. What about a public hearing?
I think we should, seeing that people showed up earlier, we should have a public hearing, so make a motion to schedule a public hearing.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? That is unanimous. So we will schedule a public hearing at the next.
Can you, can you vote to deem it complete?
Are we?
We're supposed to do that before we schedule a public hearing.
Yep.
Is it complete?
It is, yes. We've been working with, told you when this is here, he has a couple of notes to add, but we recommend he be.
So move. Is there a second? All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Where's, where's the new septic field?
It is, if you look on the screen.
There's the reserved one.
Yeah, it's located right in front of the proposed well. The proposed well in the zip box here. In the septic system in the reserve right by there. We did have a determination for the board to make though, uh, you know, the existing house has been there, I wanna say since, uh, mid nineties. And there is an existing septic system in the front for that house. Um, and the question we have for the board is whether the front house, existing house, need a reserve as well. Uh, we do have a reserve in back that could be used for either house because they're gonna be right next to each other. Um, so we didn't really think in, in other, another reason would be needed because it do show one. And either house could use it if they have a bad septic system. Um, but that was a determination for the board to make is whether a reserve septic system is required for the existing building as well.
Why would you need a reserve septic system?
Yeah, the existing system has been there and it's been functioning for, you know, an extended period of time. So, and we do have a reserve in the back.
There may be one.
That could serve both dwellings. So we didn't really see a need for another reserve, but something for the board to consider at least.
Make a motion that it's not required.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? That is unanimous.
Make a motion to continue the workshop for thirty days.
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Are, are we gonna be using the shared well?
Yeah, that's.
Well, I'd like to see a well test on that then, because that area up there definitely has well issues.
Yeah.
So we're gonna need a well test to show that, that it's capable of handling the uh, how many bedrooms?
Three.
Ultimate, and what's your house?
Uh, three, four, three.
Four and three, so that's ninety times seven, six hundred thirty gallons a day.
The, the wells in that area.
The wells are terrible in that area. So you need, need to have a flow test on it.
Yeah, so you can get a water testing kit right through your code office and make.
They're gonna need a flow test, they're gonna need a flow test on it.
The other, the other, so it'll all be water quality, and then you wanna do the.
Mike. Yeah. Yeah, water quality is the issue, I'm, cause you can fix any well. I'm more concerned about the amount of, of flow that's going through there.
Makes complete sense, sure.
Any other comments?
Uh, one item for the board, or two items for the board to consider, um, that's because it's related to the, you know, the old subdivision plan with four lot subdivision, and four lots doesn't trigger any of our current requirements for clustering. But because there's a fifth dwelling being added, the board needs to make a determination that you're not gonna require a cluster design. It doesn't make sense in this case at all.
So move.
But second.
Second, all those in favor? That is unanimous.
And, and in two thousand twenty-seven, that won't even matter anymore.
Yeah.
That's the worst part.
July first of twenty twenty-seven.
July tw- yeah.
Uh, another determination was for the board to find that the proposed contours they show on the plan are suitable. They only did it around the area of the proposed house, but we're fine for that.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
And uh, for the board to waive the requirement for a York County Soil Conservation District soil map.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Oh, I want one more.
What, what is going on here?
It's in the memo, you guys are trailers.
He's just feeling it, so.
Uh, I, you know, because it is a four lot subdivision, it doesn't trigger open space, but it take well in wood, but the board can waive that requirement, again, it doesn't make any sense.
Move to waive the requirement.
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous. Anything else, Mike?
Uh, I'm good for now.
You're sure?
If we're gonna have a public hearing, we should make that determination after the public hearing.
Okay, we've made our motions.
Yep, so the public hearing will be in two weeks, right?
Yes, two weeks.
Yep, you have time to schedule it?
Yep. Yeah, we gotta get newspaper ads in by, in the day tomorrow usually, that's right, plenty of time.
You're all set, sir?
Right, thanks guys, appreciate you.
In two weeks.
The next item on the agenda this evening is the Wells Agunka Resort. Welcome. On the record, would you like to tell everybody at home in here who you are? Welcome again. Mike, you had comments for us?
Um, yes, most of our memo is just uh, giving a history on the application to date. On the second page of the memo, under item two, we reference a recommended plan note regarding, uh, they still, they have that road that goes through the shoreline zone that they have to go to ZBA on, um, and it, and it affects the lot coverage in the shoreline zone as well. So we are recommending a note to be added to the plan, just that they have to go to the ZBA to get that approved. Um, and that they have to file the ZBA application prior to September thirtieth. Um, if for some reason the ZBA doesn't approve it, which I assume they will, because it makes good fire access around the building. Uh, but if in, in case they didn't, then they'd have to re-vegetate that portion of the road. Um, but we're addressing it as a note on the plan, so they won't have to come back to planning board for that. Trying to take care of both options when it gets approved or it doesn't. Um, Route one buffer, uh, they don't have any trees really in front of the site. Uh, we had recommended planting a couple of trees in the front along the fifteen-foot area beside the right of way. Um, they could pick whatever location works and doesn't block your signage or anything. But uh, if the board would accept the landscape buffer along Route one, just to include two new trees.
Is it just two or three?
Um, well, but it's, I guess that's up to the board.
What was the, what was the distance of the frontage?
Uh, there's, there's quite a bit of frontage there, I think there's two hundred and fifty feet of, of frontage. You know, they do have their, their, their entrance road here.
In the middle, right?
Yeah, uh, it's not quite in the middle. We were recommending just two over here, and then nothing on this side, because their sign is there, and there, I don't know if there's any real evidence of a cemetery there, but we do have, you don't wanna plant a tree near the cemetery. So we weren't proposing or recommending any in this area, and two seem to balance out that area.
Cause it, is this the one with the big pines in front?
No, this has nothing, nothing in front.
So you're saying just two?
That's where we, to, to not interfere with their sign and to not get close to the cemetery with any digging, we were just recommending two often.
Make a motion to accept that.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? That is unanimous.
Uh, they have no, no changes to their water or sewer connections, so we are recommending the planning board uh, waive any need for letters from the sanctuary or, or water district.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous as well.
And then we were just recommending to continue it for thirty days, to, I think, just to add the note thirty-two and the two trees, I think that's all that's left.
No, is this one that was moved in the dumpster?
Yes.
Yeah, where they moved them to?
Oh, uh.
I didn't see it on the drawing.
It's not on the plan.
It's to the back corner, right in this location.
The back corner at the end of that dirt road?
Uh.
That goes around the back of the building?
Yeah, right, right where it takes this bend here, you know, right up here.
It's on the upper side of it.
Yeah, on the upper elevation between the playground and the end of the hotel building.
Oh yeah, there it is, found it. I thought you guys were talking about up front.
No, we, we talked about up front, but this location looked better, better, because the truck can easily go in and come out.
Yep, no, I thought, when we were talking about last, you were going up to the front corner. I'm good.
Yeah, I think we had highlighted both options and they were gonna talk to their dumpster people and see which one works best.
What about the uh, debris that was out in back, like the old trailer and things like that, has that all been removed?
I don't know if it's been removed yet, it's a condition that they have to.
Yeah, so the, all the debris and stuff are automatically.
And there was a trailer frame and all that, that's all gone?
The trailer is uh, um, I think, I need to find somebody to pull it out, um, I talked to the previous owner, but um, he recommended uh, some scrap metal company wells to take it out, so we'll do that. I think right now it's all the vegetation is around, if we can't get in there, maybe in the fall we'll, we'll take it out.
Okay. Gotta make sure that, that's on the plan, right?
And there's a requirement. Yeah, and there's a requirement for posting the buffer, the twenty-five foot buffer along that area too.
Right.
Yep. The only other question is, what are the new tents, new seasonal tents, what are the tents for?
Yeah, just all the picnic tables.
Just covering picnic tables, so that, so they're not being set up for people to stay in?
No.
Well.
They're more like a canopy.
Canopies might tents.
Like pop-up canopies, basically, okay. Make a motion to consi- uh, continue the workshop for thirty days. Is there a second? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Continue for thirty days.
So, um, I saw the mark, um, the two trees and then what else, uh?
Yeah, the notes that Shannon sent. Or they were in our memo.
The number three she was not completing.
Yeah, it was just for including more and.
Oh, okay. Yeah, and I think the verbiage is in our memo, if she didn't send it separately, I, I think it's in the checklist or in the memo.
And then there was two other, um, um, lines that were shown on Route one.
Uh, there was one line change for the, the front setback, uh, because we originally had said the front setback should be sixty feet.
Yep.
Uh, but it's, the hotel unit's only one story, so it only needs to be four.
I think that was already updated in the latest.
That's why I thought that was already done.
Uh, but, but there was something, I don't know if you have the markup ones, but on Route one, there were, there were a few extra markups that were shown, I don't know whether that's.
Oh, you know, I don't recall those markups. Was it for the property lines on the other side of Route one? No, those are there.
They were, uh, it was on the Route one, um, so not sure what they were for.
Could've been just for the, the lines, the travel, travel, the double yellows, the travelway lines.
Yeah, I never remember.
But I, that, that, okay.
Whatever is there, we need to basically have to do.
Yes, whatever we're, we're lining on there, if it wasn't done already.
Okay.
Great.
You're all set?
Yeah.
Thank you. So Mike, you got a question, right? You're all set, but the property next door, all that debris that was in the uh, waterway there?
I know the code off.
Has that been addressed?
Uh, the code office went out and uh, talked to them about the dumpster and that area. I don't know the resolution on it, but they did go out, maybe a week or so after we noted it from our site walk.
Be good to get an update on that, I mean, there was a lot of.
Yes.
Trash being thrown down there that didn't belong there.
And that dumpster was right, if not, barely on the property, it might've been partly in the right of way, too.
Okay, the next item this evening will be Drake Station.
Somebody's gonna be bummed. This is, somebody left their laptop, I'll leave that with you.
I'll keep that, I'll keep it safe.
That was the Barak Kimball guy, Mike.
Oh, was that his?
Yeah.
Okay.
He's gonna get home.
Maybe we'll still be here.
We might still be here. I might be able to make it back.
On the record, would you like to tell everybody who you are for us?
Uh, yeah, my name is Jeff Aliva, I'm a sub consultant here, representing the applicant, who's next to me, Benjamin Mags, uh, um, Drake Station LLC here for this proposed uh, life, um, life care facility project uh, at the intersection of Drake's Island and Route one. Um, it's been a while since we've been back here with you. Uh, we'd like to talk about uh, review for hopefully preliminary approval tonight and give you an update about where we are with the work we've been doing, uh, reviewing the traffic light. Uh, the work with um, our traffic engineer, uh, having the assessment with uh, DOT. And then also Benjamin can also talk about his discussions with the public works director and the, um, his attorney working on uh, a law for discussions for a traffic light. But I think at this point, um, Mike sent over some uh, plan edits, we've made most of those uh, comments uh, today, this morning, uh, on those, we'll make some more adjustments, and I'd like to sit down with Mike and go through them before they come back to see you guys uh, again, a- as we move into the final review, hopefully. Um, I think we're there, we're still waiting for DEP for our stormwater permit. Um, like everybody else is waiting, and so it's, it's, it's just that situation of waiting for that. Uh, as you know, we submitted that a long time ago, um, we got initial comments back that they didn't have any issues. Um, they, they really liked our approach and that's um, kind of what they're looking to do in the future of these smaller, I think I've discussed it at the, at the board here before, these smaller treatment areas and not relying on one big treatment device using these smaller areas of building by building as you work your way through. Um, so, um, that, that's where we're at, glad to answer as many questions as you guys have, um, kind of go through that process.
Mike, did you have comments for us?
Yes, uh, originally I put it on the agenda just for an updating and extension, uh, and then the applicant emailed me back and said, I think you can go for preliminary approval, and Jen and I both looked through the file and, you know, we were talking about the traffic light and other, you know, items and issues on the site, but preliminary approval is really just a completeness checklist. You know, there'll be compliance items that they have to address as part of the final plan submission, and the final plan review and compliance and look at. Uh, but we did go back and we went through all the completeness items, um, and they had, you know, submitted material on all the, all the compliance items for preliminary approval. You know, whenever the board considers a draft, preliminary findings, a fact, you put conditions of items that have to be submitted with the final. And, you know, we really wanna list those items right in the findings, and we listed them in the, in the memo. So some of the items that we would wanna address with the final is the final road name selection.
Mm-hmm.
And approval by the nine-one-one coordinator. Um, we did have some plan notes and markups to be addressed, but those were all compliance items, they weren't completeness items. Um, some of the life care facility notes to be added to the plan, like some of the conditions that are required for a life care facility. Uh, but again, those are compliance items, maybe completeness items. Um, so it seems like it's appropriate to require those as part of a final submission versus at this point. Um, the building you show in the RC zone exceeds the limitation on the square footage, so you could break down into two buildings
Yep.
or reduce the size of them, but again, that's a compliance issue. Some of the gross floor areas that you provided looked like they were over, but we weren't sure if you were including garage areas or not, so we just needed clarification on that.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, and we've been tweaking the, the, the footprints a little bit, if anything, we're gonna make them a little bit smaller.
Mm-hmm.
But they'll be compliant with the maximum of that eighteen fifty, uh, gross floor area for the unit.
And then the big item would be the, you know, traffic light design, to have that as part of the final submission. We know you're working with DOT and, and, you know, for funding sources and, you know, that, that's, that's, you know, on the applicant and not on the planning board, so the planning board, you know, doesn't really care how it gets paid for, it's just, that'll be a requirement of the approval for the project. Um, as long as there's an understanding of that at the preliminary approval stage, you can work on it in, you know, in between preliminary and final submission and sort that out, but I think the board wants a clear understanding that there will be a traffic light put in if, if this project moves forward.
As part of the proposal, just so you understand.
So part of the final submission will have to include that traffic light design. Um, you can still be working, figuring out who's gonna pay for it, you know, and if that, you know, stops the project, it stops the project or not, but I think the, I think a preliminary approval can be granted, as long as there's a condition that a traffic design be provided with the.
Well, the final plan will be approved if that's not included, so it's very simple.
Alright. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, but, um, I don't know if you noticed today that the DOT is doing traffic counts again.
Is that DOT doing them?
Yeah.
I don't know who's doing them, but I saw some tubes out, yeah.
They're all over town.
They're all over town, so, and it, it's primarily Route one and the, the feeder roads into Route one, so.
I'm assuming it's for the corridor study.
Yeah, so I, I'm thinking that, just let you guys know that, that you, you wanna put a traffic light there, or, or we're gonna require to put a traffic light there. But it may be a while before you get a design from DOT if they're still doing traffic counts.
Yeah, they've gone into design phase for the Route one project, so.
So Mike, are we approving this as residential units, or is this a site, site plan uh, for business for these units?
It, it's both, it needs a site plan approval, uh, because there's criteria within section one forty-five for a life care facility. Uh, and we were recommending a, a separate plan be provided for that, that's clearly just a site plan approval.
Yeah, yeah, just, just the site plan, yep, yep.
But it's a subdivision as well, these are residential units, but they fall under the category of life care.
So, so the reason I'm bringing this up is, we're in the historical district, so we need some designs. For the buildings and stuff.
Uh, we're, we're partly in the GV, partly in RC, so we're split between the two, only one building is in the RC.
Yeah, but the historical district. On Route one.
There is no historical district on Route one, there's GV and there's RC, there's no separate.
So, so why did we make the one-on-lot home farm give us all kinds of designs?
Oh, oh yes, there's architectural standards.
That's what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we just.
So we need to have architectural standards for these units.
Yes, yeah.
Because they're in the historical district.
Yeah, well, I, it's just not named the historical district, but we have architectural standards for all this area of Route one, yes.
Wow, you understand what I'm saying, yeah. Yeah, so we need to have some, some designs for the uh, elevations and stuff for the, for the units or?
Yeah, no, we, we, yeah, we know that we'll need to do that for the final.
Yep.
To show that with the, with the slope groups and we were working on that, um, we've been bouncing back and forth of working with a modular company to be able to supply and make the installation faster. Um, but now we're back, back, bouncing back and forth to see if it makes sense to, to do stick built onsite or modular. But they'll, they'll be compliant with that, the, you know, the minimum pitch, I want, I forget, it's like five and twelve or something like that. Six, twelve and, and on the backside, you can, yeah, we, we going through those architectural standards for that, yep.
So what do you want us to do? You want us to approve what, Mike?
Well, yeah, we can actually review the preliminary findings of fact, and, and the board could consider approving them with the conditions that they provide and information as part of the, the final submission.
So do you need us to find this compliant?
Uh, no, not for preliminary, for preliminary, preliminary approval, you can just go to the draft findings that was in your packets.
Okay.
And we don't have to go through item by item, it can be one motion and vote, just to approve the project as a preliminary subdivision approval. And the chairman is authorized to sign, it's just a, we don't sign plan, we just sign the findings. Um, and that, that puts them on a timely in line two though, because you have to come back for a final application within six months of the preliminary approval. So it does set a deadline for coming. So it does set a deadline for coming back. Um.
So move.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? That is unanimous. You have any other questions this evening?
I feel like- Yeah, if you had any other design questions, you want to ask the board to help, you know, to reach the final.
Is your design gonna be like a colonial type building or?
Um.
It's gonna be cool, yeah.
Yeah, our, our, our architect has the designs and my wife's working with the architect. And so, um, it, it, it's gonna be, it's gonna, it's gonna comply. As far as the specifics, that's not, that's not my focus.
And you did talk about, you know, phasing the project at a couple of points and, you know, that can be part of your final submission.
Yeah.
If you did want to propose a certain number of units with a very restricted entrance and exit, I think at one of our meetings we talked about, you know, self-bound in only and self-bound out only. If you put a design together that was very restrictive, the board could recen- you know, consider a very limited phasing. Um, but we didn't talk about that a lot of details. We didn't have a plan.
We didn't have a plan to show you, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that can be part of your final. You can still explore phasing.
Yeah. Yeah.
You might, you might want to take a straw poll and see how they feel about when that, Mike, those are.
Yeah, I, I, the number of units might be a good, we're, it sort of depends on how restrictive that other design would be.
Because.
Yeah.
But if, if the board, you know, is of the opinion that, you know, you get three units, but then you have to put in the light anyway, then you might as well just go for the light.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, if it wasn't forty-six units, you know.
Half of them.
Twenty, twenty-something units.
You know my position on this. I think the traffic light needs to go in before they even have ten in.
I mean, the, the neighbors feel like the traffic, uh, the, the light's gonna, there hasn't been an accident there for ten years. There are good sightlines. There, you know, it's not much different than other intersections. You know, of course you have a lot of people coming out Drake's, but that's, I mean, Oliver Wells, when it's busy, it's busy. Um, and so, I mean, the traffic engineer doing all the science doesn't feel like it's gonna create it, create.
You know our position on this, okay? So you, no matter what your traffic engineer continues to tell you,
Yeah.
we have told you, you're gonna have to put in the traffic control system, okay? So there's no sense in debating it. You're just gonna have to figure out at what point we're gonna agree to put it.
Yeah, and so that, so it's a question for the board. How many units do you think is reasonable if we have restricted in and out? Um.
I would say.
Well, if you phase the proj- projects, how many phases, which you probably have?
I'd like to do two.
Yeah.
It needs to be done in the beginning. We talked about the construction traffic and everything else along with all this as well.
Well, they, so they have multiple en- access points for, for the, you know, not, not just the new road that's proposed, cause that road's not there. I mean, you know, that, that's just seems, it seems like the best place to have an entry and exit, but, you know, there's an existing, um, entrance. I don't know where we're looking at it. Yeah, I mean, right by the triplex.
So if you're going in two phases, what's it, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty and twenty-six, what is it?
I mean, yeah, I mean, in, in that range, twenty and twenty-six, twenty-three and twenty-three. I mean, you know, see where the, uh, where, where the water feature goes through to work on one side and then, uh, to work on the other where we come in from, you know, the, where the triplex is with restricted in and out.
I think at one point it might have been discussed with the board to, to do a hammerhead right here.
That makes sense. I mean, living, starting a light just like that could cause traffic issues too. People gotta get used to it.
This would be phased one, but.
Yeah, exactly.
I would start, I would do phased traffic light.
I would.
So.
Maximum of ten units. Yeah, I, I would say you'd have to change the phasing, because I, I can't see putting that many units before you put traffic light in. I, I think at the last meeting we talked, you know, we talked about, uh, uh, phasing it, but I think we were looking more like, you know, maximum like ten units before you.
I think ten is the number I remember being discussed, yeah.
It is, but it's what we said, ten.
So, so my question is, is what are the units that you're gonna build first?
I'd start at the beginning and, and work back.
So you're gonna continue, you're gonna continuously bring construction vehicles out that main road while people are in there?
I would start with the ones on, I, I would start in the beginning and then, or start, you know, right, yeah, right here. And then at some point I'd flip over to having access where the triplex is, cause that triplex will come down.
Coming up in between on, on that lot, on the left-hand side of, of that wetland. You can have an access road that comes up to create the, the rest of the loop on the western side of the property.
I think, I think it would be good for the board, Jeff, if you could create like a, a phasing plan showing these construction entrances, then, then that way we, we'd add it on paper with them.
Yeah, you can't really tell from this.
Yeah. How, how are we gonna stop the, uh, the sedimentation stuff going into the wetlands when you do that crossover? We, we've got the open space area. I mean, you're gonna put, you're not gonna put a, uh, a paved road in there.
No, it would, it would.
So it's gonna be gra- gravel.
Yeah, I mean, right now it's just, it's grass and.
No, no, I know that. So, so what's gonna happen is you?
It'd be just a gravel working road. Then once it's done would be then rehabbed and, and reestablished on the way back.
So, so how are we gonna handle protecting those wetlands?
Oh, we could come up with erosion controls for that.
But there, there's, there's an existing road there as is. I mean, that, there's an, you know, it's a dirt road, but yeah.
Yeah, there's an old wood road that go through that, yep.
So what's our next move?
Well, they got preliminary approval, so I guess they're on their way and you have, like I said, six months to come back with your final submission.
Yeah.
Um, but you can go back sooner.
But we can come back sooner and talk about phasing and, and that, that.
Absolutely.
Right, you know, the phase, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I think the phase is gonna be a big issue.
Well, and, and also, you know, working on, on the light. And so when we have a, a estimated, estimated time for when the light could go in, you know, we can come back and discuss phasing because it doesn't make any sense if it's two years for a light or three years for a light to.
Yeah. Yeah.
I, I think you're gonna have a, a, a big problem giving, the, the way the D, DOT moves, I think you're gonna have big problems. It's gonna be a long lag before you get them to approve your light.
Well, the traffic engineer says that there are a few different ways to do it. And one of them, uh, uh, working with Steve Buckley, if we do an MOU, which the, our attorney, my attorney's drafting, if we come to terms, then we can go to DOT and perhaps get one within twelve to eighteen months. Perhaps.
Perhaps.
Perhaps, but. But we'll see. I mean, nothing ventured, nothing gained, you know?
So then if they put you out for twelve to eighteen months or even two years, where's that put you in your build process?
Uh, I mean, it depends on, i- if I can do half of it, no problem, but if, if I'm looking at like ten or eight or twelve, then, you know, we'll just cross that bridge when, when we get to it. I started on this in twenty sixteen and wetlands in twenty twenty, so. Well, this changed a lot in that time.
Mm-hmm.
Certainly has.
So you all set, Jeff?
I am, yep.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night. And then under other business, Mike?
Ordinances. I put together a memo for the ordinance changes. We've been working on the date together. Um, and have some updates. We've had the town attorney look at each of them. Uh, this is a memo I put together for both you and the board of selectmen. Board of selectmen have a meeting tomorrow night to review the same exact items, because in order to get anything on the November ballot, you have to have a joint public hearing with the board of selectmen on September second in order to meet the deadline for, for early balloting of those requirements. Um, so I put together the memo so we could go through each of the proposed ordinance changes. The first one to put down was chickens and it's our domestic poultry ordinance. And the word I got from the town attorney was that this is not a law that supersedes home rule. So we don't have to change anything if we don't want. So that was my first question was, you know, they did have some, some, uh, minimum square footage requirements for chicken coops, minimum square footage area for, you know, like the pendent area for chickens. If you still think those are good ideas, um, we could still forward them to the voter and update our ordinance, but we're not required to. Um, so we could just leave our ordinance just the way that it is.
We had any problems with the ordinance that?
We have not.
Didn't want to change it.
Yeah.
And, and with so, with so many ordinance changes, the people, the public's starting, they don't fully understand what they're voting on and they're starting to get upset about it. So we, we need to make sure they know what's going on. If there's no problems and we're not required to do it, why are we changing it?
Yeah, I mean, the only impetus to this was the state changing the law. And at the last minute, the legislature, it was gonna override home rule and then they changed it to not override home rule. And they, they added specific language to that effect. Um.
So I would make a motion that the planning board recommend no changes to that ordinance.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Well, uh, the next one was timber harvesting and the purpose of the timber harvesting was to bring it into compliance with the state rules. Um, as I went through it and I asked the town attorney too to verify it, uh, because it involves shoreline zoning, we have to get main DEP approval of any ordinance change that affects shoreline zoning. Uh, so I don't think I'll get input back from the DEP before September second.
No.
So this was another one. I mean, all the changes I think are good and we've discussed them and workshopped them. But I don't think we're making the November ballot on this one either. I mean, I can get DEP approval on it and we can do it for next June. We've been putting off the update of timber harvesting for probably eight years, so no rush.
We do, so we can make a motion that the changes we've made are acceptable and forward it to, to the board of selectmen, right?
We already did.
Um, well, the board of selectmen haven't seen the last version, so.
Did we do that last meeting?
Yeah, last meeting we sent a phone.
Did we submit it for last meeting today?
I don't think we had any changes, so they, they have the same version.
Okay.
But we, you know, the, it wouldn't make sense to schedule the public hearing, I don't think. Um, I mean, we still could.
Yeah, you don't need to, or you don't need to, public hearing, you can delay that.
Yes, there's no rush for it, is what I'm saying.
There's no rush for it.
Yeah, because suppose the EP comes back with a bunch of.
Right.
True, yes.
But you, don't you need approval to submit it to the EP?
I would like it, yes.
So that's what you would like?
Yep.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
I would say.
Uh, next one is affordable housing. Uh, so this is one we've worked on in the past quite a bit. Um, I highlighted in the memo the changes to date. Um, so originally the last attempt to put it on the town ballot, it was a combined question for the voters for ADUs and affordable housing and the selectmen wanted to see that broken up into two questions. So that's the most significant change is that it's broken into two questions, one's just for affordable housing and one just for ADUs. Um, there was some references to the purpose of the ordinance change. That's been eliminated. Um, there was also reference to an effective date that went back, uh, about a year and a half. Um, and that would be a retroactive ordinance, so it, you really can't have an effective date to go back in time that far. So that reference was eliminated. Uh, changed the language at the last workshop. Uh, we had the state language of, that it had to be a minimum of thirty years dedicated and that was changed to in perpetuity.
Yep.
And the town attorney reviewed that language and, and was, uh, fine with that, the way it was reworded. Um, also added the minimum rental period of twelve months, like, cause that was discussed at our last workshop and the town attorney agreed that that still met LD two thousand and three and it's, um, you know, goes more to that housing being affordable versus any chance of it being used for short-term purposes. Uh, so I think the changes to that ordinance are in order that we could schedule, vote to schedule that joint public hearing on September second with the board of selectmen.
So move.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Um, accessory dwelling units, uh, similar to the previous one. It's a separate ballot question now. We eliminated the statement of the purpose, eliminated the, the retroactive effective date. Um, and we do have a change though, um, and I quoted the statute at, towards the bottom of the memo in blue. Uh, the LD eighteen twenty-nine bill that did get passed, uh, most of the effective date of that is July first, twenty twenty-seven with a couple of exceptions. The definition of an ADU is effective ninety days after the adoption of that statute. So they have mandated a, a definition of accessory dwelling unit that will take effect September twenty-fourth, um, you know, twenty twenty-five this year. Uh, so we had to make an adjustment to our definition of ADU to comply with that. Uh, and the only difference is that currently our ordinance requires an ADU to be only done off a single-family dwelling. And the new state definition says that you can do one off a duplex or off a multifamily building too. So if you had a triplex or a quadplex, you can do a dwelling unit off those. The town attorney's interpretation and, and my reading of it is that we can still restrict it to one per lot. Cause that's how it's currently language is.
An ADU for one per lot.
Yep, so if you had a duplex on a property, they're still restricted to doing one per lot, but it doesn't matter that it's a duplex. Our current ordinance says it has to be a single-family dwelling to do an ADU. And the state law now says you, you have to allow it for other types of dwelling units as well. But it appears we can still restrict it to one ADU per lot. Um, so that's how we, myself and the town attorney reworded the language to match that.
On the, uh.
So that was a surprise change that we just found out about between the last meeting and this meeting.
On, on eighteen twenty-nine, it, it, uh, removes the limitations on sizes. Does that come into effect in two thousand twenty-seven or two thousand twenty-five?
Twenty-seven.
You're sure?
Yes, yeah, this is the only change.
That's the only one?
Other, other, other than the subdivision law. We'll get to that.
When does that change?
That's at the end of my memo. We'll get to that.
So you need a motion to accept the new language and to forward to, to the select board and to schedule the joint public hearing.
Yes, correct.
So move. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
And we got sidewalks. Uh, so, uh, expanded or expanded the description to include everything in the Route One corridor study. So expanded it to specify Route One, Chapel Road and College Drive, cause that's all being tied into the corridor study. Um, eliminates the option to contribute to a sidewalk fund. Uh, it includes the development of a new dwelling unit as a threshold for requiring sidewalk construction um, and changes the construction spec to allow stamped concrete versus the pavement requirement that's there now. So those were the summary of the changes that we've been workshopping.
So, so they have to.
I think we're gonna change it, I'm sorry.
They have to put the sidewalk in now.
Correct. Any commercial development, any new commercial development would, even if you're expanding an existing commercial development as a threshold
Or any brand new housing.
or if you're adding a new dwelling unit or if you're significantly, if you're doing a full tear down rebuild of the dwelling, it's triggered then as well.
Okay, cause, cause I mean, since two thousand and five, we, nope, not many sidewalks have been put in.
No, no, I, I.
And they, and they need to start to go in.
Yeah, the number of site plan approvals that have gone through us or staff review that have required sidewalks in the fourteen years I've been here, maybe four or five.
But there's been a lot of them that had, that they did, um, they said they'd put them in if every, if the sidewalks were put in in other places. I remember those.
Oh, yeah, well, that's.
How do we find out which ones are supposed to be putting them in?
Well, that was part of the, the, uh, funding mechanism.
Yeah.
Because we allowed contribution to the sidewalk fund so that that money can be used to do more connective sidewalks elsewhere. So some projects did that.
Okay.
And we're limiting that as an option.
Though we're gonna change the language to the Route One corridor study area, because you didn't include Sanford Road to the train station in your definition.
Uh, well, that, that's already covered under the current, um.
That's okay.
That's the, the current sidewalk development plan from two thousand and three, covers everything from Route One right to the train station. The thing I added was a reference to Chapel Road and College Drive.
I get that, but I thought, I thought we're gonna use the wording, cause we want corridor study from whatever year it was.
Oh, I, I added that language too.
You did, okay.
Yep, yep, and I do reference it as the one from, uh, it was finalized in twenty twenty-four.
Okay. So you need us to find this one acceptable as well and to schedule a joint public hearing?
Acceptable.
So move.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Now, the change to LD twenty-nine that impacts subdivision and it does for us will take effect September twenty-fourth of this year is they were, because our ordinance just, we don't have a full written descri- you know, description of a definition of subdivision, we just revert to the state statute and we say, or any amendments there too.
Oof, is that the mountain hall?
Is he looking for his laptop?
Yes, he's looking for a laptop.
We left, we simply found it.
I knew he'd be back.
We've been reminding us to. He's still live.
That's embarrassing, I appreciate all of you.
So yes, because our definition of subdivision is simply the division of a parcel into land uh into lots. As defined as thirty A M R S A subsection forty four oh one, or as in acts amended there too. Because our language is that, no changes to our subdivision ordinance have to go to voters for approval. Um, if it had to go to the voters for approval, then we'd be on the July first, twenty twenty seven deadline. Um, but our language automatically accepts changes to section forty four oh one. Um, so.
In the future, can we change that so that we're?
We can, in the future, we could change that, but right now, we're stuck with it and and it'll take effect, so we can't.
We don't have to do anything.
Yeah, we, yeah, there's no requirement to change any ordinance, so it'll go into effect in the ninety days. Um, and the change to subdivision is that you're still, if you're creating three or more lots. You're still coming to the planning board for subdivision approval, but if you're creating up to four dwelling units on one lot. You don't have to come to planning board, so it'll be exempt from planning board review. So if you're taking an existing big building and converting it into four units, you don't have to come to planning board for that approval where you would now. If you're taking a commercial building and they specify that in the new law, if you're taking a commercial building. And converting it from commercial space to dwellings up to four, you wouldn't have to come back to planning board for that. Um, even if you had a vacant lot and you were building a new building with four units on it, you wouldn't have to come to the planning board, you still have to meet density. You still have to meet all the setbacks, multifamily requirements, those are in section one forty five. So you have to meet all those requirements, you just don't go through a planning board process where you would now.
How many, how many units kick the uh multifamily requirements?
Uh, just when you get to three, if you get to three units on a lot, whether they're in one building or separate, it triggers multifamily.
So we have to do some mandatory training before September twenty fourth?
Uh, no, that's a, it goes into effect September twenty fourth, but everyone has half a year, hundred eighty days to get the training.
Is town gonna set that up?
Uh, actually, uh, under other business, M M A is sponsoring a training.
Yeah, I I read that, but that says for new, new new members that don't understand.
It would be the same training.
That that'll cover that?
Yep.
Yeah, it also says for older members.
That'll cover the training?
They're offering it through Zoom as well as live.
Will that cover this required training?
Yes, yeah, that's the reason why they did it.
Okay. So you need to know about that?
Nothing, just letting you know about it.
Do we have any other ordinance that have wording like that, that uh sort of like we get bitten the butt for uh. Number now one of medical places that we have and things like that?
You know, I think.
Is that they use the state language? Mike?
I'm not sure.
Well, we should review.
We have some ordinances that we did very recently that referred to technical references. In automatic, you know, like a I T email, we recently did one for that, but has nothing to do with state law. The weren't the technical relationships, you know, um.
Well, we should at least have another review, I wouldn't, it's just make sure there's no others that could sneak up on us.
Just as an aside to that marijuana thing, I don't know if you've heard that a uh. A guy up in the northern part of the state.
Got arrested?
Yeah, illegally growing uh marijuana, um without state control.
Ah.
And now the the biggest concern is that, um.
I didn't know they were still doing that.
With with this with this uh with marijuana is that uh the tests that the state use don't um. Fully determine whether the chemicals that are in there, there's there's uh illegally grown marijuana that has nerve agents in it. And and the tests that the state runs don't do that, you have to you have to go to uh like Homeland to get.
Better every day, it's better every day.
There was one other item to take action on though, we do, uh majestic regency is due for an extension. And evidently, they haven't been getting our emails, uh Shannon finally got them on the phone. And they said they hadn't been getting our emails, because we've given them a couple of extensions, and we tried to get in contact with them. And evidently, they haven't been getting our information, so we did feel it was appropriate to give them another thirty days.
So just just a question, how come they're not here tonight?
Uh, it's a site plan, they, we have that requirement that they have to come in person for subdivisions to ask for extensions. But it's not, it doesn't apply to site plans, so we asked them to give it to us in writing, and they sent us an email and we summarized it in this memo.
Okay, so is this is this for violations that they're trying to take care of, or is this for?
No, they actually went to the Z B A and got their dislocated building appeal approved. This was the site that had, we had the golden speed.
No, I know that, but wasn't there some other violations there?
Uh, well, we wanted updates to check for lot coverage and parking.
Yep.
They wanted to take down some trees on the front.
Those are the big pines I was thinking of.
Yep.
From the opposite side of the street, yeah.
And we said they could, you know, if they have a new landscaping plan, we could consider that, but they haven't given us.
Weren't there some plantings and stuff that weren't put in and that they're in violation of?
In the back, right by the golden speeds.
Yeah.
Site, there were plantings that never got planted for the zombies.
So I I think this should be the last, the very last extension.
Yep.
They need to get it taken care of, I mean, they they, I mean, I understand they wanna change the site plan, but they're in violation and they're just, you know, dragging out at this point.
So what do you want, fourteen day extension?
Thirty day is fine, but I do agree, this should be the last one.
This should be the very last one, they need to.
All those in favor, that is unanimous. Tina's resigned.
Yes.
Yes, yep.
That's too bad.
That's sad.
Yeah.
And now there's an opening created, correct?
Correct, yes.
So you need a motion to adjourn and sign findings and facts, correct? Uh, what what were you signing?
Yes, there is one, uh, the preliminary findings of fact for for um.
Right?
For Drake State.
That's it, no, okay, that's my motion.
Second, all those in favor, that is unanimous, the meeting is adjourned.